Committee of the whole two quarters. Sue, can you follow all, please?
Councilmember Cantio.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Salzmoedl.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here. Look for motion and approve the agenda for the committee of the whole.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, any discussion or changes tonight? Sue?
Councilmember Cantio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzmoedl.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. Citizen discussion items not on the agenda. Anybody? Nope. Number four, lead and copper rule.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In front of you is a PowerPoint. I've asked Brian Vilma and Dan Sorek from Kana Newhaw come speak to you about the changes to the lead and copper rule for drinking water. The changes that have been approved by the DEQ are, they're quite, they're a lot different than what they were in the past. There's a lot more requirements for municipalities to address. Some of the things, there's going to be probably a legal fight regarding the constitutionality of it. And we are going to be impacted by this. One of the things that you'll hear in the presentation is items regarding reducing the lead copper level from 15 parts per billion to 12 parts per billion. The good news in that aspect is the city, when we test our water, we're trace to nothing when it comes to that. So our water system has been impacted by that. But there are some issues pertaining to the maintenance of the private lines that we are probably going to have to look into. But I'm going to turn this over to Brian and Dan, and they can go over their presentation. If you have any questions for them, I'm sure you'll get to answer them.
So you know Brian, I'm Dan Sorek, I'm with Kana Newhaw. Been there about four years, actually, just this past week. Anyways, prior to that, I was the Water and Sewer Superintendent for the City of Holland. I still have my operating license. I'm very, very familiar with operating water distribution systems and how these things impact you. This is the, basically, I put on a webinar about a month ago with Malini Masaschevsky from the City of Ann Arbor. It was put on through American Water Works Association, American Public Works Association, MML, Michigan Township Association, and Michigan Rural Water Association. They're all sponsoring several series of discussions about these significant changes to the lead and copper rule. Of course, the lead copper rule changes are being, I guess, coming about because of what happened in Flint, of course. And that, hey, they are rolling out some pretty onerous, you know, pretty beefy changes. Now, these are rules, so it's not legislation that went through your state legislators, although they did have an opportunity to review them. So there's a bunch of acronyms, of course, you know, it's government, so there's a lot of acronyms. I'm not going to go through that list of acronyms there, but just dive into the brief history of what's been going on. Of course, the Flint situation started in 2014, 2015, really came into a head. And as we've learned more over the past years, they had a change in their water source from the City of Detroit to the Flint River. And their method of treatment and how they were handling the chemistry of the water changed the chemistry in their entire distribution system. That sparked a lot of things and revealed some of the, I guess, the flaws in today's lead and copper rule that was first implemented in 1991. So the rules that we are under today, I mean, there was no lead and copper standard prior to 1991. And I say that specifically because 1991 doesn't seem that long ago to me. So these lead and copper standards have only been in place for the last 25 years. But in 2017, there was some stakeholder meetings. There was a public meeting in November of 2017. A draft rule was first published by the DEQ in January of this year. That showed a lot of, you know, it revealed a lot of the changes that the state has been looking at. The state did take it on the chin with, you know, how they handled the Flint crisis. So they are trying to prevent another catastrophe in the future. The state has come out and said, basically, that there is no safe level of lead, and there's no public health official that's going to tell you there is a safe level of lead. So I'll talk about that again in a minute. But there was a public hearing in March, and comments were received from a lot of public agencies all over the state, a lot of citizen groups, especially, of course, out of the Flint area. In May, or excuse me, in April, there was another revision of the rule. I did a presentation, first week of May, at the Michigan Infrastructure Conference. The same day, they made more changes to the rule that were significant, because they had actually dropped the standard from 15 parts per billion down to 10. And then back in May, they upped it up to 12. And there was a few other dates and significant changes that were done as well. But May, that was kind of the settled on what we have today now that was finally adopted in June 14 of 2018. And the JCAR, JCAR is the Joint Committee for Administrative Rules. That is the legislators, there is a joint group of legislators, state senators, state representatives, that review these administrative rules. These are rules that are promulgated by the DEQ under the Clean Water Act, or the Safe Drinking Water Act, excuse me. So these are rules that are adopted by the DEQ to enforce the Safe Drinking Water Act. Now, the DEQ will admit, I've had lots of conversations with many of the officials there from the top all the way through, I think they were taken, well, they were taken by surprise by the speed and how fast this actually came about. They expected a lot more opposition. There has been a lot of opposition, but they expected more opposition from other state agencies, the administration, and from the legislature. That didn't materialize into any other changes, and so therefore, they formalized the rule on June 14. So what went into these changes? So there's a summary of changes listed. The action level changes from 15 parts per billion to 12 parts per billion. As Mike mentioned, your lead levels are very low, so you're not even in the, that's not even a concern at this time. But it is other things that are more concerning. There's a lot more definitions in the new rules, and those definitions talk about what a service line is. It was a little more vague in the previous rules. Distribution inventory, so your system was supposed to have had an inventory done in 1991 when the rules were first adopted. There was no enforcement behind it, and there was no accountability behind it. They are basically putting in place some enforcement and some accountability for a system inventory on the service lines. Furthermore, that inventory was mostly for systems that had issues with lead or high levels of lead in their system, not for every single system in Michigan, regardless of what their lead levels are. So now, the new changes are, regardless of what your lead levels are, you have to have an inventory of all of the service materials connected to your distribution system. The sampling pools changed. It was on a tier system. It's going to be a little bit different with a different sampling pool selection. So what you, the sites that you're currently testing now may change a little bit. Probably not, it's not a significant change. The sampling procedures are changing. It used to be, you take the first draw, basically, you turn the tap on after six hours of no use, take a sample right away. Now, it's going to be two samples, and it's that first draw still, and now you let three liters of water pass through, and then you take another sample. And we call that the first and fifth liter. How does that impact things? Well, the rule is your 90th percentile. So you take a look at the average of all of your samples, well, now you've doubled the amount of samples that you're taking, because you have to take two. And it's going to be the highest result at each site is going to be considered. So if you took two samples, one was five and one was six, well, the six parts per billion is the one you're going to count, not the five parts per billion.
Can you get in one second? Just one quick question. Is everybody aware also of what the sources of the lead is really in the water mains? Have everybody's read a lot of the information? That when you look at, we talk about lead in a water system, it's true that in some cases, some of the lead, the joints in the main water main were sealed with lead. But that's actually a very low percentage of systems that have that. It's a really old piece. Most of that's been replaced long ago, even with the cast iron mains, that's really not much the case. So primarily, the source for lead is in the water services themselves. So when you talk about where Flint, for example, where all the lead came from, wasn't from the water mains, it was from water that was in the lead services. And primarily, and Greg knows this, this is with water, you know, common materials, you need some kind of material that bends when you try to connect to water mains, because not everything lines up perfectly. So oftentimes, the service from the water main to the house was either entirely of lead or oftentimes of a different material, which could be galvanized material, that went from the house, the meter, towards the main. But oftentimes, even if the service line was galvanized, the last six feet or so was what we call a lead gooseneck. It was a flexible piece of pipe that they could connect to the main and move where they needed to to line up with that water service. So the primary source of lead in all these systems is either that lead gooseneck or the lead main. And one of the points that, well, that Dan talked about as well is, even if you have a galvanized service, there was the thought that some of the lead could have leached out of the gooseneck and deposited itself on the inner walls of that galvanized line. So even if we've replaced the lead service portion that was in the right-of-way, the piece outside may still have some lead accumulation, so that's the concern. Okay? So just so everybody knows where that lead is coming from. Additionally, one thing, and Dan's got this mentioned too shortly, is that within brass fittings, brass fixtures, there's a certain amount of lead in those as well, which is why that first flush is important, and also running water through is another piece. So, and especially in much older homes, that lead content in the brass fixtures is higher than in newer ones. So those are two primary sources. I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page, understanding where the lead was coming from, understand how the rules impact that.
Yeah, to build on that, the lead is not coming from your distribution system, it's coming from the service lines or the materials in the private plumbing inside the home. Brass is an alloy of copper, tin, and lead. So a lot of brass fixtures that are very common, that are bought off the shelf, had a lead content in it. It doesn't typically dissolve out of the material into the water though. But that first flush was designed to capture the household, basically get a sample from the household plumbing. And now, the second sample is to get a representation of your distribution water, if you will. The key dates that are coming up with the new rule is that you have to have your inventory established by 2020, January 1 of 2020. And that's, I call that a desktop inventory, that can be done based on best guess, based on dates. Lead goosenecks, as Brian mentioned, were used up until the 1970s with galvanized plumbing. And so if you took, basically, took a look at any age of homes or age of construction, age of plumbing, typically after that is either plastic or copper. So hopefully, copper, that seems to be the standard that everybody's going to today, is copper plumbing. But you can use a date to start off with. The action level actually goes down in 2025, so we're still six and a half years away from that. And that's where it goes down to 12 parts per billion. Then your field verified inventory, so basically, you've got to have a methodology of verifying your desktop inventory. So it's not just a best guess, it's now, you have to have eyes on things either through inspections in the home, or open cutting into the street, or I think it's in the news lately about Flint's situation, and how they're potholing or vector excavating theirs. They don't like doing that, they like to actually excavate it. It's going to be up to you, and the DEQ has to sign off on how your methodology is going to be determined. It's going to be, you know, everybody, every community in the state of Michigan is facing this, so a lot of the methodologies are going to be very similar on how to verify what your materials are. The definitions are, these are the big ones right here of the new rules. The service line is now defined as that entire service pipe all the way up to the building, and 18 inches inside the building to the first valve. Or, you know, 18 inches or the first valve, whichever is shorter, inside the building. And a lead service line is one that is made of lead, has a piece of lead, like a gooseneck, like Brian mentioned, is that just that little, usually about one to two feet, three feet connection at the main, or the entire service line. And the big catch on that is the is or was statement, we call it. If it is connected to lead or was connected to lead. So as Brian mentioned, if it was replaced 20, 30 years ago, but the remainder of the pipe is galvanized, it was connected to lead, therefore, it needs to be replaced still today, according to the DEQ and these new rules. So the material system inventory, basically, if you cannot verify, you have to assume that it's a lead service line. So if you don't know, it's best to get an idea to find out. And that could be with a meter replacement, you're getting a replacement, you're getting eyes on that pipe coming in through the house, what that material is. So if you're doing any meter replacements, you know, start documenting today what that material is coming in, that's good information to have. If a service or if a resident is connected to lead, or if you determine that it is a lead service line, you now have to notify the customer. There's updates to the inventory that has to be done on a regular basis to the state. And then the CCR requirements, that's your consumer conference report, your water quality report that you publish annually. You have to publish now your inventory in that water quality report, how many service lines you have, and how many lead service lines you have. So not every address, but just, you know, how many you have. And then you start, now they start dictating how many you have to replace on a regular basis. Now, the old rule from 91 stated that if you exceeded the lead action limit of 15 parts per billion, you were now put into a 5% per year replacement schedule, basically, to replace all your lead service lines within 15 years. That has not changed. But all communities, no matter what your lead's level is, whether it's trace or zero, doesn't matter, if you have lead service lines, you have to replace them at a rate of 5% per year, basically, within 20 years. So their goal is, the state's goal is to eliminate all lead service lines, or even partial, or any segment that was connected to the lead service line by 2040. And it includes that portion that's owned by the public up to the curb box or to the right-of-way, and on the private side. And again, that was stated, even if it was connected to lead. So it's galvanized. And the thought is, some of the studies that have been done by Dr. Edwards out of Virginia Tech, he got a lot of press, he started back in 2001 with a lead situation in Washington, DC. And he approved that, basically, the galvanized plumbing has some buildup of scale on the inside, and some lead flake can build up and hold in there. And when it's shaken, it can break free at any given time and build up in high concentrations. And it's just unknown when that could happen. And it's not likely that it'll come through with a sampling, but it's not coming through constantly either, in the same sense. So, but it's, what the state is basically saying when it comes to lead service line replacements, you can no longer just replace a portion of it, you have to replace the entire service line all the way up to the house.
And that's the piece that's currently being challenged.
That's the piece that's being challenged, because now that's putting public monies into private property and doing work on private property.
It's a violation of state constitution.
And there's, yeah, the constitutionality of this new rule is going to be challenged.
Just to kind of elaborate, the issue that is, our system, we don't really have a good idea yet as to what, for portions of our system, what's in the private line. We know in the municipal system, there's no lead lines, and I believe there's minimal galvanized.
Minimal, very little.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're in pretty good shape.
We're in good shape on our end, but we don't, the issue we have is we don't know what's in the private lines. And we don't know what that is, with that amount. I can tell you, from what I've gathered from some other communities, obviously, I don't think our, it's going to be, you know, if we have a substantial amount, it will be an impact. For example, I know in the City of Grand Rapids, they have 23,000 lead lines they have to replace. I don't know how much that will cost them, but I know in the City of Jackson, they're looking at $60 million for the replacement, that quite frankly, the City of Jackson doesn't have. And a lot of these cities don't, this is not accounted for in our rates. And it's, depending on what happens, it could require rate changes that are substantial to accommodate this.
I can tell you, 25 years of running a plumbing business here in Lowell, I've probably replaced at least 100 services I've never seen lead service in Lowell. Seen a lot in the Grand Rapids, but not in Lowell.
Furthermore, the state tells you that, they're not giving you a whole lot of options on how you're going to pay for this, unfortunately. It's basically, you have to pay for it through your rates. They are taking off the table, they've already said, that you cannot assess the homeowner for the work on the private property. So you have to include it in your rates. That was kind of a, that was another nice little twist of this rule. There are leaders at the state DEQ that would like to see all communities take ownership of the service line all the way up to the building. And that's some of the, I guess, some of their mindset, is they look at, like the gas company owns the service line all the way up to the building, they want the water utilities to do that, the same thing. Some electric utilities do, some electric utilities don't. Usually, if it's overhead, they'll take it all the way up to the house. If it's underground, they'll stop at the pedestal of the street. But that's, you know, it's different in each electric utilities. But there's leaders in the state DEQ that would like to see water systems take ownership. There are some communities in Michigan that do that, Lansing, Kalamazoo, and Wyoming are three that come to the mind, and I don't know of any others. Those are the only three I know of. But there is very few that own the entire service line all the way up to the building. Any questions?
How does a homeowner determine whether or not he's, he or she's got galvanized or lead pipes coming into the home?
Well, you can usually tell if it's copper, and basically, if it's copper or plastic, you know you're okay there. But if it's steel or lead going in, you might have some better tricks. But I'm thinking that if you scrape it, and it's very silvery, it's lead, but the chances of a lead plumbing pipe inside the home is very, very slim. It's the galvanized, it's.
Well, my house was built in 1870, so you don't know.
But I guess if you scrape it, and it's very silvery, and I don't know if there's any other tricks.
Yeah.
You might want to move, Jim.
Might want to move, okay, great.
We do have a fair amount of galvanized services in town, that I'm thinking probably between 10 and 20% of the galvanized services.
I know the service is also done in my house, but I'm just not sure.
But that is a good point, that, you know, as a community, you're going to have to make that decision of, do you want to continue to just own to the curb stop that just normally has the right-of-way line, or do you take it and you own all the way to the meter? And as Dan mentioned, it varies community by community. Say the vast majority of them probably stop at the curb stop, but there are a significant number that, like City of Kalamazoo is a great example, they've always claimed that they own all the way to the meter. So they're taking care of their issue right now, they're working on it.
Does the DEQ set protocols as for what municipalities need to do to start their inventory? They just say we have to do the inventory. But they haven't, have they started, because internally, we've kind of had conversations about how we would address this with my staff, but there hasn't been any clear guidelines from the state of what we can and can't do.
No, they haven't, they haven't published any guidelines yet. But what they did do is they offered roughly $10 million to 18 communities, and they have done a pilot, they're doing a pilot grant with those 18 communities. And it's anywhere between, some of the communities got $50,000, because they're very small communities, and some communities got $1 million, like Detroit. Detroit, Grand Rapids, I know were two of those 18 communities that did receive some pilot monies. And the pilot monies, they tried to spread it out across the state from Ironwood down to Monroe. But they are using that, that pilot is expired in May 31 of next year. They're hoping to use that as a lessons learned to publish for everybody else to use, basically talking exactly what, you know, going right to your point there, what guidelines and what, and tips and tricks to help other communities.
So if they're going to have something that's in May, that gives us nine months to put a plan in place to get into compliance, how is that going to work?
The state also has, I guess, just in their little note is, from discussing this with the state, they have not expressed any interest in enforcing this until the first of the year. So you do have a couple of months before, I mean, they're not going to come in and start enforcing this until January 1st.
Right.
Even though they passed it June 14.
Right.
But you have until January 1, 2020, to get that desktop inventory, your best guess. And then you basically, from that, say, say you have 50 services, that's the number then that you have to, that is now standard, so you have to replace at a rate of 5% per year after that. And some of the little catches on that is that one service line could be, could be fully lead from the main all the way to the house, could be a gooseneck, could be copper from the main to the curb box, and then galvanized the rest of the way. Doesn't matter, it's still just one. So it could be any combination of those that is going to basically count as a, into your inventory.
How does our city want to get that inventory? Do you go to Holland, Kansas, Kansas, how do we gather that information of what our lead is in the water?
I think that's one of the things that, one of the results of the pilot project, as Dan mentioned, is what are all the techniques that municipalities are using. And so it is, the first is the desktop one, that says, look through all your water records, whatever you have. You've got service lead cards, you've got notes on plans, whatever it is you have that's on paper, the desktop version. By 2020, you've got to sort through all that and identify which ones you can positively identify through those records that you can say are copper or galvanized, or whatever they are. Then you'll have a list of other services that you're not sure of, because there maybe aren't records on them. Yours, for instance, is a good example. Then you start looking, okay, is it likely that it was galvanized or lead? If so, then after 2020, you're going to have to physically go check it out. And that's what a lot of communities now are doing with the pilot project, is different ways of physically finding those things. As Dan mentioned, some are digging it up, and they're getting cost data on what that is. Some are potholing, you know, a couple feet on the side of the curb box, to see if they can see what it is on either side of that property line. There's different techniques for that. Some are going and chemically testing by the meter, and there's a couple of different ways. They're also developing ways of replacing them. So I know, we worked a lot with the City of Kalamazoo, they're doing, I think we've done 500 of them between last year and this year so far, a couple of different techniques for pulling the old lines out, pulling the new lines in.
Brian, is there a timeframe for when they were using certain products because it was the latest and greatest? Does the state know that? Like, Greg, maybe you'll even know this, was there a time when they were using this product because it was out there and it was, you know, supposed to be the best? And then as it evolved, did they come out with another product where they thought it could go in? Does the state have those ideas on when that product was out there being used, so you could go through that way? When a house was built and kind of maybe diagnosed it that way with the latest and greatest? Because everything's always evolving.
Right. I think lead services were probably from 1900 to maybe 1930 or 40. But I think when we replaced water mains and stuff in town, and we could ask Bob Robinson, who was here forever, he would remember, but I haven't seen any lead in Lowell, I think they're in pretty good shape there.
Is there requirements for Greg, businesses like Greg's, if they're out, he would work somewhere? There's nothing that.
Not to the private sector.
So there's no way for them?
But it's just one of those avenues where you can partner with your local plumbing community to try to gather that data. Where those, just on some of that point, Lansing, very publicly, you know, I mean, a big splash about they. they just replaced their last lead service line. They had a lot of fully lead service lines from the main all the way into the house. And talking to a lot of their folks there, they found that it was their higher-income neighborhoods had full-lead service lines. Because it was touted back in the early 20th century as the best thing, was a full-lead service line. So it was ironic that, you know, it was, you know, we hear about Flint, and of course, it's a, it's a lower-income area. But in Lansing, it was, they found it actually in their higher-income communities in there, where it was a fully-lead service line all the way into the building.
To your point too, we think they can actually rule out some neighborhoods in the city completely, just because of the.
The timeframe?
The reality list, there would be a good example. So we wouldn't even spend a ton of time focusing on that. We'd look more down at the other parts of town, actually. And then the other thing we discussed amongst ourselves too, was just a postcard. It would say, does your service in your basement look like a copper pipe attached to a ground? Or something other, attached to a, a galvanized or lead service? And then get a postcard response to that. But that's one of those things that's not really clearly defined for us. So Graham, you can go and ask the state, what is an okay methodology? And then if that's okay, then we'll employ that as a, as a way to get this initial round done. And I think we'll be ahead of the curve, because Bob did have a lot of records.
Yeah.
So they're in pretty good shape. Oh, one other thing too, since we're talking about this. One of the trickiest things for us is that the rule called galvanized, where it says either was or is. And that, that word was or is, or whatever the phrase is, is really tricky, because we always don't have great records all the way back. So we may not know if there was a galvanized line connected to lead at one time or another, so we're, we're, it's not a caution. Just assume it's your flat.
If you don't know, it automatically is treated as their house.
Right. Well, that assumes, like you say, that you might see galvanized sticking out from the meter going outside. But the assumption that DEQ is making is that that lead service, or that galvanized service, excuse me, at some point up in the yard terminated and made a last connection to the water main with a lead gooseneck. That's their assumption. So they're forcing that issue.
Thanks. Well, do you have any more questions for them? This is something we're going to be dealing with going forward, and that I felt was important that you have understanding as to what, how we're trying to start to address this. There's going to be, there's going to be some issues that come up, obviously, because, one, we don't know how much leads, how much lead replacement there's going to be. It's going to be a cost, if there is, it's going to be a cost to us that currently isn't accounted for in our rate structure. So it's something that, as a council, we're going to have to look at further going forward.
And, and a quick background, and just, I think the, the DEQ's rationale for that is, really, there's, they were initially looking at an urbanized area for a water service. And their thought was that most of the lead services, again, right or wrong or otherwise, just saying that the rationale was that the lead services initially, they thought would be in lower-income areas. Because they hadn't been replaced, they weren't newer copper services. And as Dan mentioned, that's not always the case, you may have older, higher-income neighborhoods that also have lead. But DEQ's assumption initially was look at Flint, lower-income areas, they have lead water services, we need to protect those folks. They ruled, DEQ ruled out special assessing those property owners. So that's why they're saying the system as a whole pays for it, and it was in, in the DEQ's mind, a social justice issue. You helped the lower-income neighborhoods get a safer water delivery system and replace the service, and let the system as a whole figure out how to, how to pay for that. So theoretically, they would pay a small portion in their water bill or frontage charges they had, but they couldn't be directly assessed. So everybody in the community shares that cost. So that was the rationale. And that's not always the case for every community, but that's the, the basis for the DEQ deciding.
Any questions, you want? The mic? We'll come back with you once we have a more detailed plan of how to address this in the straight. We'll come back to the council.
Very good. All right. Well, is that out? Number five, extension with the chamber.
Couple months back, the chamber approached us about, about purchasing the, the building or going, entering into a, a new 10-year lease with the chamber. Since that time, we have gone out, we've gotten appraisal of, of the property. We've shared that with the chamber. And they have, they have, they have talked about what they would like to do. And like to bring it back to the council to see what the council's pleasure would be in, in moving forward with that. So I'm going to turn this over to Liz.
And Rick is going to speak on our behalf.
Nothing about lead. As we know, the chamber has been part of the community for a long time. They've been in that building for 20 years now. And I asked Liz the question, which came first, the chamber or the Riverwalk? Well, part of the Riverwalk did, but the chamber has really been the institution to help bring that Riverwalk to what it is today. And it is the central piece of Lowell. They'd like to purchase the building, and I guess they need to know how the council feels about trying to move forward in constructing, or at least getting a purchase agreement together that might have some contingencies in it. They have affordability questions that, that they need to go through with the, with their board. The board can't really afford it. They need to seek some grant dollars. In order to seek some grant dollars, they need to go through a study. And with the environment that's going on right now, with all of the different organizations that are now asking for some grant dollars for different projects, it would probably be, you know, a couple, three-year ordeal where they would potentially get some funding to be able to purchase it. The other side of that is that they need to put together a, a pretty sizable fund for maintenance. And, and we know that there's a roof that's going to be needed here coming up at some point in time, heating and cooling questions. And they can't do any remodeling of the building to Leona. And, and as Lowell has become ever more popular, as we know, having a, a chamber office that's really well-presented to those visitors, I think is really crucial and important to our community. And it's not just the city Lowell, it's the whole community. So the question becomes, are we ready to go ahead and go forward and try to put a purchase agreement together that would create a purchase at some point down the road when they do have funding? And allow them the time to be able to put together a feasibility study and see if they can make all this happen? That's what the question is today.
So yeah, the council, I mean, the council can decide what they want to do. Just remember the charter provision. The charter provision requires that if we do sell property, we do have to go out for an RFP. We don't necessarily have to take the highest bidder, we can take the most qualified, the one that we think is best for, for that parcel. One of the other things that we have to do is also make sure it's on market value. You can't sell the building for a doubt. We can't, does, the state constitution doesn't allow that. But those are just two things that we need to keep in mind going forward. Now, two schools of thought of this. One of the things we, we, I think we pretty much, pretty much got the impression last time was that no matter what happens going forward, we want the chamber in that building, whether or not we sell it to them or we lease it to them. That, to what I, what I understand now. We've got an appraised value of the building, the appraised value is about $215,000. That may, may be an issue. But one of their biggest concerns, one of their biggest concerns is, we go into a lease, another 10-year lease, 10 years from now. We don't know who is on this council then, and they're concerned that they're going to lose their opportunity. I'd like to think if, if the chamber's making a presence in the community, making the presence known that there are positive impact in the community, I would hope that future city managers, future councils would take that into account and continue the past practice. But that being said, they, they do like, I mean, they do like the idea of having stay on their own building. So it, I under, they're, they're kind of, they're, they're in a rough world. And I'm, I'm pretty much of the, of the opinion that chamber wants to go into a long-term lease, go into a long-term lease. They want to buy, I think I give, I think we have to follow a process of what they want to do. Sounds to me that, could be wrong, it's pretty mixed between the two entities, whether you, whether you go into a long-term lease or a purchase. But I think we're open to whatever the chamber, I mean, is, or, as, whatever, what I would recommend to the council is, what they recommend, what they would want, what they think is best for them, is probably what I would recommend. Because I, I don't think we, I don't think the city loses either way.
Not if the chamber's right there, nobody loses if they're right there.
Correct.
Because that's not even down there without them, let's be honest.
Right.
It's a dilapidated boat with some concrete without, there's down there, for real.
Are they here the end of their 10-year lease?
Yes, believe it or not, they're here, correct?
Yes, because on the 31st.
Is there a way to renew that lease with that option, that if their feasibility study comes back and then it seems like something they can do, then we can do all the stuff we need to do? You know what I mean?
We could try to talk to the city attorney about that, but I think that's not going to.
It has to be a 10-year lease, it can't be like a 5-year lease.
Oh, no, we can go less, the lowest it can be is 10.
It can't go more than 10.
No, cannot go more than 10. It can go one, it can go three, five, just has to stop at 10.
Because it sounds to me like it's going to take you three to four years to.
Could, it could, under the, under the environment right now with, with grant dollars. So I think the idea here is, is that there's a year left, and we're trying to stay out in front of it. But also, it may take, you know, a purchase agreement with an extended lease of what's going on right now, that would be the option to purchase. And that give a point in time when they can put that, that plan together. So yeah, I, we guess it's probably still going to some lease time, beyond the, the year that's left, in order to put the funding together and make it all work.
I'm curious what they use for comps. That seems a little high to me, and sometimes they end up in other communities for comps, but.
They did.
They did.
They, the comps they used, I believe they used a building out in Hudsonville, a building in Ada.
Nothing local, no.
Yeah, there, there was nothing they, they had locally in there. It was, I think, the closest smaller data.
And part of the problem that I looked at, and, and Mike, Mike and I played a little game, I think, to start with, to see, you know, what we thought it was going to come out in.
Right.
And, and, and also, you know, a couple of people that, that worked for me at Green Ridge. And I know John Meyer, and I know a few of his appraisers. I didn't think it was going to come back that high, because he, when you compare commercial frontage on a main dray that has the walking traffic and the driving traffic of that exposure, I didn't think it would necessarily be quite as much as sitting back here. And of course, you know, okay, it's on the Riverwalk, but that's seasonal commercial to me. And, and I thought it was going to come back around 165.
I thought it was going to be around 180.
When you look at the school building that's for sale, which is 10 times the building and property and stuff.
Yeah.
That price just doesn't, for that.
I think, I think.
The price seems high.
It's being, I mean, I know, and I don't, I don't, I didn't, I didn't ask the assessor in this, in this at all, but I know the assessor's appraising property in that area, the downtown, about three down a foot, square foot. I know that's what she's utilizing in her, in her, in her assessment. And then if it's along the river, it's a thousand dollars frontage for each foot is what, what the assessor's using for assessment values.
And I looked at the appraisal, I didn't see where they tied it in with the river, but.
Yeah, I don't think they did.
In all due fairness, it does not include the river.
No, it doesn't.
No, it's, it's short of the river, you guys are still going to own the Riverwalk.
Right.
So I, I, I don't know how, you know, why it came back that way, but I tell you what, in my business, I've learned that you can send five appraisers to one piece of property, and you'll get five different figures. They'll all be within a range, but you'll get five different figures. So I think, you know, you know, part of my question also is going to be, we can start with the discussions that we'll have to go through the council, and we need to get something on paper so that they can take the, the time and the initiative that it's going to take, you know, to try to gather the funds that will make this happen. So one of the main questions is that purchase price. And it just seems too high, and I know that you have your, you know, rules that you need to abide by. I don't know exactly what they are, but I don't know what you could do as far as giving the chamber a break on that price, or where you can go with that. And I think maybe we just have to sit down, Mike, and maybe go through some, some scenarios and see where we can go with it. But we do need to start with a purchase agreement. Otherwise, the chamber, you know, it's going to take a lot of work on their part to try to put that funding together.
Right, well, that's where, if we're going to go a purchase agreement, that's when you have to go into an RF, because you have to do an RFQ before you can do a purchase agreement.
Before you can do a purchase?
On your RFQ, yes. Okay. That's the issue. We have to put it out for bid before we can sell. We just can't go into a purchase agreement, your RFQ is not allowed for that.
Okay. Well.
And if it was park property, it would be a vote of the people, which is a park property, so.
Is there a time limit that they can extend that purchase agreement out, that within, could we give them a three- or four-year option at that price? Or do we have to get a new appraisal if it gets to?
That's a good question for the city attorney, I can get that answered.
Speaking for myself, the chamber has done such a great job for Lowell and helped turn this into who we are, that whatever we can do to help you, I'd like to see this go up. I think the other council, I feel the same way.
Is there a way to get, is this the appraisal that we have to use, like it's final? I guess, and so, I don't understand how Hudsonville and Ada are comparable, though, really.
And I'm a, and I'm an appraiser, I can't really, I can't explain how they, how they do that process. They try to take similar-sized buildings, is what they, or what I understand.
You can get more appraisals, but they're 2,500, $4,000 apiece.
Yeah, we spent about $3,000 for the last one, so yeah, I mean.
But if it saves you $50,000.
Right.
So do you need an appraisal to establish market value in order to go forward with?
My understanding, I mean, or we could maybe go out, I mean, the other option is maybe go off the assessor, the assessor's value, but I don't know that. I don't know what that would be, I mean, it could be more, it could be less, I don't, I don't know.
Well, that would be an interesting discussion, you know, because basing it on, on properties that are right here in Lowell, and trying to do an adjustment for where it sits versus where other properties on Main Street. I don't know where you place the value. Main Street exposure seems to be, to me, would have a little more value than just sitting behind Main Street as a seasonal walking traffic. I'd be more than happy to give you appraisal.
Sure you would.
It's going to be variable, right?
So anyway, it's back in your hands, and we'd really like to try to work some on it.
I'd like to see a lease where they can purchase it. The problem I don't want to run into is you cut down the years, right? So you give them three, or four, or five years, and then the process takes longer, or the funding doesn't come through, and they have to find another source of funding. Now they're going to be worried about the new lease all over again.
Well, you, you could do a couple of different things. You could create a, you could, you could put clauses in here. You could say you want to do a 10-year lease, but every year you're going to annually review this. And maybe at the, you know, at the, you know, the two-year point, you decide, okay, we want to, we want to go and start the process. So that's when the RFQ process comes in. And you start there, and then go from, go, you go from there.
You could actually have a 10-year lease with an option to purchase at any point in time.
Yeah, that too, yeah.